About having someone who's an expert in parliamentary procedures in, but just to discuss again the way the council conducts business. And so I would move that we do that.
Mr. Chairman.
Councilman Kozinski.
I have no recall of anybody making any derogatory remarks at this council table during the formal sessions, either open meetings or closed. So the statement that just was made has some erroneous activity to it.
Mr. Chair. There's a quorum here.
I have. I have the floor. This memo has no recommendation for council action. It alludes to a question of the integrity of the council ethics and also implies that we have done something wrong in dealing in issues of purchasing by citing the policy code, I think it's 527 something.
502 dash 27.
Yes. So the letter in itself really has no merit, or does it have any actionable decision to be taken by the council and therefore should have not appeared on this agenda? And if we set a precedent of pulling out the crying towel because somebody was criticized, if the kitchen of criticism is too hot to stay, get the hell out.
Mr. Chairman.
Well, and I think, I think we do need to have a meeting on, we open to the public, on procedures the council doing with department heads and here.
Well, I've got that information. I was going to present it tonight.
And I recall that. That's one of the things I had in mind. Councilwoman Lisa Hicks Clayton.
We'll go ahead. Let Councilman Muscat go first.
Councilman Muscat.
The talk here that this doesn't have any merit is absurd as far as I'm concerned. And it doesn't have to happen in an open or closed session, but when you have a quorum here, when you have a quorum, and we had a quorum, okay, and it wasn't just a crying towel, there were accusations that were falsely put forth, okay? And I will let Councilwoman Hicks Clayton address those herself. Now, I don't understand. All I did was bring forth a letter so we could all follow the same rules. Now, you can take your towel and go cry, okay, because I'm not crying. If you weren't here and somebody had accused you of something, I would be defending you with everything that I have. Anyone at this table, I will defend when they're not here, because that's just not right, okay? It's not that I'm taking sides for one person or against another person. I will do this for anyone here. The mayor, our corporate council, if they're not here to defend themselves, I'll do the defending, because that's not right as far as I'm concerned.
Any further discussion?
Yeah. Mr. Chairman, I was not going to, I didn't want to get into this, delve into this, but I was not here. That was on, excuse me, it was June 21st. It was a study session from what I've been advised, you know, and since I've been on council over and over, have tried to work with everybody, tried to make sure we have decorum, but when another council member, and no, this isn't a cry tell by the way, false allegations brought forth, and yes, I have backup documentation right here, right now, to prove they're false, that is considered slandered, and that is part of a public act that protects elected officials from slander. So simply, I think what we're asking is that this elected body, we do need, if you want to revisit, bring in a parliamentarian, all for that, but we have a policy and procedure manual in place that has a section specifically on ethics of which we need to maintain a high standard of. We are elected to represent our city and our community. Our residents look to us. So when you start attacking another council member, that's why we have policies and procedures in place.
Yeah, and the only thing the council can do as a council going forward is to make sure we're refreshed on our rules, on the code of ethics, the policy and procedures manual, and I think bringing in the parliamentarian would be a good idea as part of that.
Mr. Chairman.
Councilman Kozinski.
The two members, the new members, I'm presuming have gone through a session of parliamentary procedure very recently. The other members who've been around should have had the experience about parliamentary procedures and certainly had mastered the policy and procedures manual. So in my mind, there's a question as to whether another expenditure of parliamentary presentation by the expert would really do any good.
Oh, absolutely, Joe.
Well, if it does, I'd be willing to.
Absolutely.
Councilwoman Horvath.
We are a council out of hand.
One of the other things, I would respectfully request, since we're on this subject, who wrote the letter?
I did.
Who wrote the letter? I think to put the issue to bed, let's move forward and come to call for the questions.
And Councilman Muscat and Councilwoman Abdallah, did you have any, you've never seen the presentation on parliamentary procedure.
No, and the letter coincides with Councilwoman Horvath's timing of bringing someone in for the parliamentary procedures manual, okay? And, and all it is, is to bring light of the problem that does exist, as Councilwoman says, that this council's kind of disarrayed. And, and this just needs to stop of the way we're acting. And this is all I brought this letter forward for.
So it's been moved and supported that we schedule a session.
You have no motion.
It'll be an open session.
Need a motion.
To discuss, have the presentation on parliamentary procedure and discuss our business as a council. Councilwoman Lisa Hicks Clayton.
Would you please clarify the motion, Ms. Councilwoman Muscat?
There is no motion.
That's what I heard, Ray.
It was no motion.
So, no, no, you should, because you are the letter, you are the maker, so you
should make a motion.
Well, to be honest with you, I don't know even how to make this motion.
For the study session with a parliamentarian.
Yeah. I move that we have a study session with, about parliamentary procedure, and if it costs us some money, I guess that we should have to put, and I'm willing to pitch in too.
Support.
Is it supported by Councilwoman Lisa Hicks Clayton? Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor of the motion, please state aye. Aye. Those opposed?
No.
So we have three for and three against?
Motion fails, so.
Fails.
Why don't we, why don't we, everybody put out their hands?
No.
So all those in favor of the motion, please state aye.
This is what you wanted.
Not this way. Not this way. Here's my opinion, okay?
That's fine.
We will get a parliamentarian in here and we will spend two hours talking about this situation. This is nothing, okay? This is immaturity. This is nothing. What we need answered is how do we run this meeting? What's the chairman's job? How motions are made? How they're repeated? How, because the mayor is an invited guest, so to speak, you know, how do we get him to talk or not talk? There's so many things in closed session, and what's a closed session? And what is a public session? But we're going to spend guaranteed two hours talking about this.
We will.
That's what will happen, and that's what I'm afraid of. I am not afraid of this. I, this, I called you and I said this shouldn't be on the agenda because it's not an agenda item, but I'm not saying anything because I knew my name is in there between the lines, okay? And what I said, I'm going to tell you this right now, no one in, there was nobody in the audience, it was just us, okay? And none of you that were here said stop. When I was shooting off my mouth, which I'm famous for doing, no one said, wait a minute, hold it, stop, no.
I believe I started defending.
No, you didn't, Ray. No, you didn't.
Oh, I didn't defend it at all?
No.
There was no defense at all?
You came back over here and you pointed your finger at me about talking. No. So, as I said, I am voting not to, not, I don't want that the way it's presented, because I don't want this to be the main subject of the parliamentary procedure.
Mr. Chair. And it won't be. That's, the main subject will be not any letter, but our parliamentary procedure.
All right.
And our conducting our reading going forward.
Mr. Chairman.
Councilman Kozinski.
We're going to go through the hassle of, hassle for want of a better word, to a study session of parliamentary procedure, expense ourselves probably up to $1100 or $1,200, and it will not address the specifics of parliamentary procedure of a formal session or a closed session. The controversy stems from what he said, she said, we said. That isn't part of the presentation of a parliamentary procedure.
No, and I couldn't agree with you, Martin. That's what we, we can't get into going forward.
They will touch on the issue of ethics. They will touch on the issue of having an interest in a contractual arrangement, a pecuniary interest, but the parliamentary procedure will not solve the issue that is at hand.
Well, how do we solve the issue at hand, Councilman, when, excuse me, Mr. Chair?
You go to, you.
I just said, excuse me, Mr. Chair.
You go through the chair.
I just said, excuse me, Mr. Chair.
Councilman Muscat, go ahead. Go ahead.
That, we need parliamentary procedure.
I thought the cost, Councilwoman Horvath, was a lot less than $1,200.
Okay, here's, okay, I'll tell you what I found out. Number one, it's going to, there's two people that come. Coco Seaworth, because we had her once before.
She's good.
And now she has a partner. He's an attorney. And they come together, and it's a three-hour session. That costs $1,100 plus travel expense. Now, she's from Birmingham. I don't know where he's from. And because we're a member of the league, we're getting a discount. But anyway, it's $1,100, okay? It's a three-hour session. Now, we can have just her for I don't know how long, for a lot cheaper, but it'll be just Q and A. There won't be any teaching. I guess that's, for lack of a better word. It'll just be Q and A, what if, and this, and, and so we can get her alone for, but I'd rather go the three hours. I, it's $1,100, but I think it's well spent.
She's excellent. She is excellent.
Parkinhead, do you want to come and find out what's going on and go that route?
And I, and just her is $75, is that correct?
I don't know. I don't know, Robert. I know the last time she was here, she was only here for about an hour, and it was about $50 or $75, but it was a quick, you know, I don't even know why we had her that time.
Yeah, and we can undo the past. There was discussion of some other agenda items, so I think we have a meeting to talk about parliamentary procedure, decorum, and everything else, going forward. Nobody can undo the past. And I couldn't agree with Councilman Kozinski more. We get into a he said, she said, but I think it needs to be addressed. So.
Mr. Chairman.
Councilman Muscat, do you have a motion?
I just had a quick question, if I may, Mr. Chair.
Sure.
Thank you. Question, I know, and I'm familiar with Coco, because she's been at many MML events, but MML offers the online for Parliamentary Open Meeting Act, FOIA and all that. In this, I guess, may I, through the chair, ask Councilwoman Horvath, are you working through MML? Is that their pricing for us?
Yes.
All right, thank you. Because I know they offer a lot of workshops at a more economical price for us.
But we, wait a minute.
I'm just asking.
Okay. So I don't talk behind your back. I'm going to tell you right to your face. We get better results face to face.
Yes.
Going online, looking at it, reading it, studying, you can do all you want online, because I've done it. It's the face to face. The yeah buts and why for, that somebody's right here that can answer it, because there's many, many, many questions that don't come out in these sessions, because I've been to a number of them. So you need the body, in my opinion.
I agree.
You need the body.
I think we will look at setting up such a meeting and discuss how we're going to pay for it, if it's in the budget, but I think that's a good idea.
It's not in the budget, so we'll take up a collection.
Not, not to address any, you know, anything in Councilman Muscat's letter, but like I said, going forward, and see if we can't come to a consensus on how we're going to conduct our meetings and different issues that come up going forward. So, Councilman, go ahead.
Mr. Chairman, go ahead, Joe.
There was an attempt, attempted question by Councilman Muscat to say, how are you going to solve the problem? If these kind of difficulties occur in the format of a formal meeting, every one of us seated here know we call a point of order and solve it right at that point. Anything extracurricular to a forum meeting or a closed session will not be solved by a presentation of whoever you want to call.
But I'm, I'm saying we have a discussion and we come to an agreement. We all come to an agreement that, you know, going forward, here's how we're going to conduct business.
Mr. Chair.
It has to do with parliamentary procedures, a meeting or a closed session. It has nothing to do with the extracurricular activity that takes place outside the session.
So let me get this straight, if you don't mind, please. And I know I'm new here, okay? And I'm just doing, trying to do the best that I can. So in other words, our policies and procedure means nothing when we're out of session. Is that what we're saying?
That was not, that was not said.
No.
You're saying outside of a, a study session or an open meeting here. Now, I'm trying to get a clarification when, when something is said about another city council member being falsely, being a false statement. What do you do about that?
When? If I may.
When does that stand?
Going back and forth, we're not going to solve it. I deal with this every day.
Mr. Chairman, can I go?
So hold on, hold on. So, Councilwoman Horvath, go ahead.
I just want to say, I knew immediately when I saw this, the only thing missing from this is my name, okay? And I knew that. However, that said, I would have thought that the correct, because I got calls 9:15 the next morning, so it was on the newscast right away. Here's how I probably would have handled it. Go to the chair, have a discussion, say, you know, I heard that Joe Kozinski was really shooting his mouth off about me the other night after the meeting, blah, blah, blah. I think you should have a talk with him and, you know, we have some council procedures here and the ethics and yada, yada, yada. And then if it happens again, then it's made public.
That was.
That's how I would have handled it, okay?
Again, I can't undo the past. Nobody can.
I understand that, Robert.
But I'm talking about having discussion.
Mr. Chairman, I understand.
Going forward. We're not, we're not.
Yes.
This is not one incident that says we're going to have discussion and come to an agreement going forward. Do you have a motion?
Point of order, Mr. Chairman, procedurally. And I said, the chair that you sat in probably for 18 years over here, what I, you had a motion, you had a vote, it was 3-3, so the motion did not pass. But you, as a chairman, have the authority and the right, and you heard from both, those that were for and those were against, and I would take Councilwoman Horvath's offer of having Coco in here, setting that up, and let's move on to the next item.
Yeah, I think that's what we need to do. That's a, that's a good suggestion.
Mr. Chairman.
Councilwoman Horvath.
No, clerk. For the record, there was communicated, there was a 3-3 vote, but we did not hear verbally who was the three and who was the three. So for the record, can we have it announced? The three people that were yea and the three people that were nay.
Why don't we do the hand vote, so we'll, everybody?
Well, we need that vocally for the record also.
Okay. So all those in favor of having the study session with the parliamentarian to discuss our procedures going forward, please state aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed?
No.
No.
Okay. Okay, so that's Councilman Muscat, Councilman Hicks Clayton, chairman, constant, no, yes?
Yes.
Councilman Abdallah, Councilman Kozinski, Councilwoman Horvath, no. Correct?
Correct.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You got that?
The next item on the agenda from Court Administrator Atkins, purchase of Conicat Minolta equipment.
Mr. Chairman.
Councilwoman Lisa Hicks Clayton.
I move to concur with 20th District Court Administrator Michelle Atkins, request to purchase and approve payment for a copy fax machine not to exceed $8,001. It is outlined in 9D.
Second.
Second by Councilman Kozinski. Any discussion?
Mr. Chairman, I just have a quick question, if I may.
Go right ahead.
Thank you. In the, the body of the letter on item 9D, it says the contract provides all maintenance, updates, parts, labor, and toner. But when you look at the attachment, the backup for annual maintenance contract, if you look three quarters of the way down the page, it says customer elects, no GMA, all service and supplies will be chargeable.
Court Administrator Atkins, yeah. Please, can you go up to the microphone?
This one here? Work fine? Thank you. That, that's, if that box is checked. We didn't check it or I missed it. Very good. Thank you. You're welcome.
Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor of the motion, please state aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it. The next item on the agenda is second reading of proposed ordinance H-1604 regarding impersonation of officers and other types of officials.
Mr. Chairman.
Councilwoman Lisa Hicks Clayton.
I move ordinance H-1604 be considered read for the second time and effective upon publication as outlined in 11A.
Second.
Second by Councilman Kozinski. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor of the motion, please state aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it. The next item on the agenda from the Senior Alliance, request for resolution approving the 2017 through 2019 multi-year plan for aging services.
Mr. Chairman, I move that the resolution be forwarded and supported.
Second.
Second by Councilman Muscat. I don't see Jason here. Mayor, have you heard anything from the Senior Alliance regarding this? I know Bob Brown was here.
Yeah, he came here at earlier meeting and said this was coming, so that would have been the opportunity to ask him questions. But the main point is, I think we give him a contribution of $3,000 to $5,000, and they return back like thousands and thousands of dollars to our residents.
In services.
Yes.
Any further discussion?
I said to move forward. The intention was to have the attachment.
Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor of adopting the resolution, please state aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? The ayes have it. The next item on the agenda, permanent traffic control device, stop sign at westbound Belton and Colonial.
Mr. Chairman.
Councilwoman Lisa Hicks Clayton.
I move to approve the request for traffic control devices. This is a permanent stop sign. Westbound Belton and Colonial is outlined in 13A.
Second.
Second by Councilman Muscat. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor of the motion, please state aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? The ayes have it. The next item on the agenda is business license renewals for wholesale retailers, Cooper's Garage and Whiskey Creek Tavern.
Mr. Chairman.
Councilman Kozinski.
I move that the city business licenses be approved as presented.
Support.
Support by Councilwoman Lisa Hicks Clayton. Any discussion?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. One of the, I put the thing, put this side of money on the table for approval, but one of the things that are troublesome as I read these time and time again is the horrendous balances of water usage. Is there anything in our purview of enforcement to do something about the water balances after a quarter of the year or three months? In a sense, we are, we, the citizens of Dearborn Heights, are carrying somebody's water expense for a prolonged period of time, and then when it comes push to shove, suddenly there is money available to pay the water balances. I'm curious to know whether we can put that balance to a three-month period and then shut things off as we, as we go forward.
Vince, what we do periodically is we will actually send a letter threatening to shut off the water. You have some residents, I hate to publicly disclose this, because it really creates havoc with cash flow, but want this to go to the tax bill. And they pay a huge penalty in interest as a result of that, but we have numerous residents that pay their water bill through the taxes. And as a, as a CPA, that portion of the water bill, the interest and the penalty are not deductible on your income tax form, although I suspect some people do that, because only, only real and personal property is allowable under the IRS code, not water bills or interest or penalties as a result of not paying the water bill.
That's exactly what happened. We actually sent out an extra letter this year, doing exactly what the mayor had said, to pay the balance by a certain date, or you'd be shut off. And I'd say half the calls we got, these people are used to getting that one letter a year, where we tell them it's going to go on their property tax, and that's what they let happen. But with all that said, that extra letter we sent this year actually reduced our delinquent water bill. That was transferred to taxes by a quarter of a million dollars? By about $250,000 this year over the last year. So it was a step that we took that helped a little bit.
So if the, if the letter, Mr. Chairman, if the letter is sent annually, doesn't that encourage the mischief that we're seeing with regarding to the billing of water? Could it be, could it be sent after a three-month period and see what kind of response you get to minimize the balance?
We could certainly do that.
Well, residential, you're going to get your bill every two months.
Yeah.
So that.
Commercials get theirs every month.
Every month. So now for a commercial, a three-month letter of that sort would make sense. Residential, you almost have to wait, you'd have to go like four or six months, so that would be their second or third bill.
Well, this, really, I'm devoting my attention to the commercial issue. Residential, the obvious question would be, is there, is there a significant number of residents, residents who are falling back to that extent?
There's a fair amount. And some of the amounts are significant. They do pay, they pay their taxes with the delinquent water bill, because they don't want to lose their property, and it's a huge premium. That interest and penalty is not insignificant. What's, what's the penalty, 50%?
Well, it's, it's on a monthly, or on a two-month basis, it's 10% of the unpaid, of the current bill. Then when it gets transferred to taxes, it's another 25%.
Yeah. It's expensive money. I mean, a $500, people who have come in, when we went through, and a lot of people came in, and we mentioned to them that we were willing as a community, if they would agree to pay the current bill in the future and then set up a payment plan on the amount owed, we worked with people to that extent. The only ones that we had to deal with then were the ones that entered into a deal with Vince or the people at the water department, then reneged. That was pretty effective. There are issues, and I won't shut, I don't like shutting people's residential water without checking with the attorney, because there's ramifications to that. In addition, we have the extra resource with the Great Lakes Water Authority in which people who are financially, maybe they lost their job, they've had an illness, they can appeal to that group, and that group. appeal to that group and that group potentially could pay for the water bill if they meet the qualifications. So there is assistance and help for those people. I would suggest that if you want, maybe we can send that to commercial a little bit earlier, we can talk internally. The residential, I think at this point I would just hold. But your point is well taken and we, but, and I think, would you agree, Mr. Riley, the treasure that probably the same people that are delinquent with the water bill are the personal property, the real, it's like everything that we deal with, licenses from, it's, you can almost pick the consistency of those delinquent people.
Thank you. Call for the question, Mr. Chairman.
Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor of the motion, please state aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it. That ends the regular business portion of our meeting. Is there any announcements from anybody at the table or anybody?
Mr. Chairman.
Any announcements? Counselwoman Lisa Hicks Clayton.
Thank you. I just had two things. The first, of course, we just celebrated our nation's birth with Independence Day, July the 4th. And of course, there was quite a bit of fireworks, though we had a ban in place. Certainly, I understand the struggles and challenges that our police faced that evening as well as our dispatch. But what I did want to say and bring to the table and share with the public is there are two, actually, there's more than two. There's bills on both sides of the House and the Senate, in the Senate, to repeal Public Act 256, which is our fireworks law from 2012. And one thing that I'm working with MML, this is what I'm going to share with you for information purposes, is we're working on an action day, which is a lobby day in Lansing. We're shooting for the month of September. So this would be a day to have our residents, actually, we would gather in Lansing and lobby. And as elected officials, that's what we do, by the way. We lobby in Lansing for things that will be beneficial to our community. And repealing Public Act 256 certainly would be one of those things. So I just wanted to let you know that, to get it on your radar. There will be more information as we work out the details, including the visits to different elected officials in Lansing. And again, that will be a lobby day. The other thing I had is just a question for Jack McIntyre, our Director of Ordnance. Good evening. I just wanted to follow up with you. Certainly, we've been getting phone calls about your, the ordinance letter and the sweeps. I wanted to see how that's going. And I guess my, the second part is, one, is how's that going? Two, as far as, you know, resolution, and I know the letter was brought forth in part because of the vector control and the rats and management of rodents and things. And my question, the second part of my question more so is border communities, you know, whether it be Inkster or Dearborn, I know there was a situation in Dearborn where, you know, with the rats that they boarded at Dearborn Heights, are we working with those communities? I know that was something that the mayor had mentioned in the past, working with those communities so that way we're working together and it's a coordinated effort, if you know what I mean? And if you have anything you can share on that.
I don't as far as coordinating vector control with neighboring communities. I've had conversations with neighboring Detroit, specifically in Inkster, about assisting them and just sharing some resources with them in terms of code enforcement on our bordering streets like Annapolis and Hayden in the northeast corner. The sweeps are going well. The heat made it difficult last week because these, the officers are out on their feet for four to six hours. So I postponed a vote and we've done six so far. One of the things that has been exciting and surprising at the same time is that most of the areas that we get into, you can see that people got the letter, got out there, started getting some things put away, getting their properties cleaned up. And that's a lot of the feedback that I've gotten that where people have called and they said the letter was, they felt was very effective. People were getting things accomplished that way, so.
Thank you. And I just want to add, if there's a resident in Dearborn Heights, whether you're elderly or you're disabled and you need some assistance with yard work, just light yard work, we do have a teen action council through Gulfview Manor Civic Association. We've had this since 2009. And we have students from throughout our community of Dearborn Heights that have been going out to help homeowners with their properties and maintenance if they're not able to do it. So you can contact me at 313-348-9848 if you need some help with that service. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I have actually been in contact with Mr. John Davidson, who resides in Dearborn Heights but is vector control in Dearborn. So there have been discussions in regards to coordination. The sweeps were not a result of any rat particular problems or other issues. These have been planned for a long time. And our, we just thought it was good business sense and the ordinance department had planned these well in advance and they're not necessarily a reaction to any specific item.
Ordnance Director McIntyre, when is the meeting or have we already had it with the lady coming from the Department of Agriculture?
Thursday. This week, Thursday.
It's this Thursday at 11:30. This is not related to vector control. This is, if you've got, for those of you that got the attachment with the email, this is more talking about pesticides, our agriculture. Some discussion will be about our water system here in Michigan. It's just good informative information regarding our agriculture here in Michigan.
So it's 11:30 this Thursday, open to the public?
It is, except that I need to have a count. So if, if anyone that sees this is planning on coming on Thursday, they're going to need to contact me at my office phone because I do need a count ahead of time. I hope to have that by the end of tomorrow if someone was interested in coming in. That's 313-791-3478.
Thank you. Any other announcements? Counselwoman Horvath?
First of all, I want to congratulate the fifth graders at the party school. They received a grant for $500 from what is called the Egyptian Animal Assembly. I didn't get all of the information, but apparently it was an art project and it stemmed around the various animals in the Egyptian area. And this, the Egyptian Animal Assembly is a group of people that are going to go out there and talk to the children about various animals in Egypt. But they did get a $500 grant and that's a very, I'm very proud of them. The other thing that I have is, next Tuesday, we're going to have the dispatch meeting, open meeting, public. I have a number of questions. Do we have, and I guess I would direct this to the mayor, do we have any answers yet to their original proposal to us? In other words, what are we going to tell these people when they come? You know, they're going to ask, why do I have to, you know, the dispatchers are going to be there and they're going to ask, why do I have to take a test when I already know the job? Stuff like that. I don't know that we have those answers yet.
Well, the presenters with the chairman, we invited the city of Dearborn and their consultants to be here. So anybody that has questions, they can ask the questions and as any council members, elected officials. So they're the ones that are making a proposal to us as a community. So I would assume we'll get a very complete. At least I told them that they ought to be prepared and answer those kinds of questions.
I guess my next question would be, are we as a council going to get the proposal so that we can go through it? Because I have a number of questions. And my main question is about the dispatchers themselves, okay? I can't understand why they have to take a test for something that they already know. I mean, I can see the cities and the streets and all that, but dispatch is dispatch.
Yeah, I'll let them respond to it, but I'll certainly share with you what a Dearborn official told me. As all of us as communities have like a civil service process to get hired, they would no longer be Dearborn Heights employees or Westland employees, they would be City of Dearborn employees. So they need to go through the same hiring practice. The viewpoint is because they've held a position elsewhere that through that process, they would automatically be well versed and score extremely high. But that's, we'll hear from them, but that's the logical. Whether or not there would be some way to supersede that requirement is a point of negotiations. And I mean, we do have a current dispatch contract up, but that's part of the negotiation process. But that's what the Dearborn official indicated to me, that they didn't feel they could just supersede their own hiring practices.
Just as long as we have people here. Because I don't have any answers for them yet.
No, no. And those are the kind of questions. Chief, do you remember the two people? I know that-
There's going to be Carrie LaCock, one of the consultants, and Spring Tremaine.
And the lady has done dispatch and set up dispatch, combined dispatch centers, five or six different times. When I, when we originally had the interview, because fire department had some concerns originally and Chief Brogan met with her and I think I would, she seemed to be very knowledgeable and thorough in regards to every conceivable question you had, Chief. I'm not putting words in your mouth, but I mean, she seemed to know her stuff.
Yeah, she's really sharp. She definitely knows a lot about the topic, so.
Yeah. And so they'll be here. It's not, I'm not presenting, I'm not asking any of you to present. They'll present to us and our public and then there'll be Q and A. I'm so glad that you announced this because if you've had concerns, this is the kind of informational meeting that as a body we've tried to establish and come in and ask questions.
Mayor and Chief Gavin, our officer will also be available in there?
I was not, I don't think it makes sense for us. We're listening and we're going to respond. We, I don't want someone to say, well, you're selling the project or you're not selling it. Let's listen to the presentation and we would just as soon have our internal expert and as that decision, if it comes to a vote or something, that would be the time to ask our expertise. But this is to listen to the proposal that the city of Dearborn is offering to the community.
That makes sense.
Mr. Chair.
Do you have anything else?
No. Mr. Chair, along the same lines.
Councilman Musket?
Mr. Mayor, you've got to make it aware to the people that still the negotiations have got to happen before anything is finalized anyway. So there's still a lot more things to be worked out.
That was, that was in light of all the discussion today, I hope I don't get included in it, but that's why I did not want to hold meetings before because there is, all that any of us agreed to and on a six-one vote was to look at an option. There is no contract, there's, and there's all kinds of stuff that's got to get worked out. And now's the time to look at those particular things.
I just wanted to make sure that they know that.
Absolutely. Good point.
Any other announcements? Mr. Chair. Councilman Musket and then Councilman-
I've got three items here. I'm going to go back to before I was elected councilman about a piece of property that was always on my radar. And that's the gas station at the corner of Gully and Michigan Avenue. I know as a citizen, I asked a question about what can we do about this service station and it kind of looked like we couldn't do anything about it. And I mentioned something about it, can we do anything according to EPA rules? Well, I took it upon myself to contact MEQ and the EPA. That service station has not closed its tanks properly.
Those are the same people that-
Okay? And is there anything we can do as a city to force hand? God knows what's been leaching out of those tanks over these period of years.
Well, if I may, what happens is, so if somebody comes in to buy it or if there's an inspection, if the state comes, they inspect the tanks. If anybody wants to pull the tanks, I don't know if they're the old type of tanks, if they're the metal tanks or the fiberglass tanks. But that would be something if either the DEQ, the state of Michigan comes, inspects it, or if it changes hands. But that's a good point. That's something that has been checked into.
Is there something we can do with that? I mean, to kind of clean up that property, it's a dilapidated building. It's just a very bad eyesore. It's just like the service station that was at Warren and Telegraph for many years that finally got razed. Is there anything we really can do about this now?
Those tanks should be emptied.
Mr. Chairman, coming to order, talking about parliamentary procedure, he's directing the questions to the mayor, not you. I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
I will remember that, okay? And I, and excuse me for doing that. Mr. Chair.
Go ahead.
Is there anything we can do to force the hand of the owner to clean up that property? According, because from my understanding, those tanks were supposed to be filled with some inner gases or something or material that would stop any leaching going on. And nothing has been done to those tanks over a period of years.
Mayor or Director McIntyre, do you have any information on?
That's not the only contaminated site. I don't know how much I can say publicly, but I'm not so sure the Warren and Telegraph site is not still contaminated.
Mr. Chair, if I may, I mean, to a certain degree, and this is one of the difficulties I've actually discussed with, I believe with Jack and perhaps with Lee as well, that whenever we're asked questions about enforcement activities in a public forum, it compromises our ability to effectively enforce things or address things. It may be helpful with some of these things if they get referred to the administration and then we can come back with an opinion on how we might be able to address some of these things. It might end up being helpful. Just off the top of my head with regard to underground storage tanks, I had quite a bit of knowledge about this many years ago when there were some on one of my relatives' properties. But these rules and the way the EPA and DEQ deal with these things can change over the course of time. And whether or not they'll actually end up actually taking any sort of effective enforcement is a different issue entirely, namely like the DEQ. Sometimes, at least in my experience, sometimes there'll be a violation of the law, they'll say that there's a violation of the law and they won't do anything. And so, but getting back to this particular property, it may be a more effective and reasonable process to try to get some direction from the councils of the body to the administration to look into this and then for us to discuss options among ourselves to actually study it rather than start talking about what we might be able to do here and then someone say, oh, well, you know, what they were talking about, what they were going to do to your property at a open session of the city council was X, Y, and Z.
Well, I think that was the councilman's inquiry and there's a couple of issues. One is the property above ground and the other thing is, because it's a, it was a gas station, is the underground tanks and the status. It's enforced by the DEQ and by the fire marshal. But the issue, if anything, the rules have become more lax than they were. But Director McIntyre?
I'm kind of glad that the counselor said that because there are some times that questions are asked and we're in the middle of a court litigation and I always look to Gary to find out, you know, how should I respond to this? Because we want to be cautious of that. We have, I've actually met with the owners of that, of that property. Last year, you know, they had to do a big cleanup. We had them clean up the property, we had them paint some parts of the building. They don't have to have a certificate of occupancy because at this point they're not occupying the property. It's been inspected in terms of the building itself, so. But we are keeping on top of the property aesthetic part, you know, the possible code enforcements of the property itself. In fact, the owners of the property operate another station. They would love to move it somehow, they're just not getting anybody that's offering any movement, so.
Can you check into the status of the tanks?
Mr. Chair, I'm just, in regards to the tanks, they don't necessarily always have to be taken out. It all depends on the type of business that you can open there. So for example, if you're going to open up hypothetically, just hypothetically, Hughes Carla, you might not have to necessarily take them out because that's, it's not considered as much of a hazard versus- considered as much of a hazard versus a restaurant where you would have to take them out. So it's not always the case where they have to be taken out.
Right, right.
And just real quick, they, I, Mr. Chair, for Councilman Musket, I would be curious to see who you spoke with, because I have been in contact with the DEQ in regards to that property. They do do routine inspections of the property, so I'd be, maybe you can share with me who you spoke with on that.
I have the, the action report, they emailed it to me.
Okay.
And it'll have the name. Mr. Chair, so, am I understanding that we would like to have the administration look into this? Is this the proper way of doing it?
That's what it sounds like, yes.
So how do we go through you, and you tell them to?
No, I give it, although we don't, rather than do it at a meeting, and we get caught in a surprise, we'd be, I'd be more than happy to meet with the owners and invite you to meet with them. They have not resisted that. At one time, they talked about how they wanted to restructure some of the other properties that they have adjacent to it to accommodate it. Somewhat, they'd like to have some of, I think if they had more of the bank property, and the bank's not willing to sell, it would have allowed, I think that might have turned into the new Burger King. But there was a limitation on the site, so the, I mean, they haven't, they don't slam the phone down when we call there, but they've indicated some of the difficulties they had. But I'd be more than happy to have you get included when we, when we talk to them.
I'd appreciate that, thank you.
Go ahead.
Two other things. One, just past week, my neighborhood, and I don't know if anybody else's neighborhood, was inundated with a bunch of solicitors knocking on doors. Joe Smucatelli's window company was out doing some windows down a block here, and they want to know if you can, you want windows, or this A, B, and C, D, E construction company. Well, I've had a lot of my neighbors come and knock on my door and ask me if, do we have any rules against that soliciting? So I'm asking if anybody knows the ordinance or the rule that can be cited, that they're not allowed to do this.
We provide, and mayors in the past have provided, I have a no solicitation that we give for free. Actually, as other mayors did, the mayors have paid for those out of their own funds and put those on the doors, and if they solicit, I think under the ordinance, you can call the police, as long as it's not like Jehovah in a Witness or a religious, and you can't stop political people from knocking on your door, because that's freedom of speech, but selling, I think you can restrict, correct?
I have to say that it's a little more complicated, given commercial speech and First Amendment concerns with regard to that, that have been raised, and all the individuals have to actually be licensed to end up being vendors, and they have to go through the city clerk's office before they would end up being able to do that, regardless of whether or not it would have any sort of protection behind that.
So, Mr. Chair, so you're, so in other words, you're saying that, you know, because I know one, one of my neighbors, I told him about the no soliciting sign, and he says, "I don't want to put that on my $4,000 door sticker." I mean, I don't blame him in that point, so I just want to get a clarification of what they can and can't do to stop this. If we see them, can we call the police and, or, and see if they're, you know, licensed through the county clerk to do this?
It's actually the city clerk.
Or the city clerk, excuse me.
Yeah, they, they, but if they, if they don't want solicitors, they should get the sticker and put it on their door.
My question is, is do they have to have the sticker for no soliciting? And these people who are trying to sell these services, do they have to be licensed through the clerk's office to be able to go solicit? That's my question.
They generally have to end up being licensed through the clerk's office to end up doing the solicitation as vendors. There are some exceptions to that, but in general, for like windows, they would.
Because they come through my neighborhood too all the time.
I just want to give answers to the people who are asking me these questions, that's all. Thank you.
Anything else?
That's it.
Councilwoman Lees Six Clayton?
No, I was just going to ask the clerk to comment, because my understa, we get this a lot, because I'm president of Gulf U-Manner Civic Association, that if they're selling something, if they're actually going to door-to-door sales, and they're a company, not a religious group or political, because that's exempt, but they have to go through the permitting process with the city clerk, which I understand includes a background check, and they would have photo ID issued as well. Is that correct?
That's correct. Advice for people who have, these solicitors come to the door, they should have a badge. They're issued a badge with a photo on there. They should have that. If they don't have that, they're soliciting illegally. I can also provide you, any of the council people, I have a list of vendors that we licensed, and I can give you that and tell you, you know, their solicitor peddler licenses, and tell you what companies they're from and, and that, but what the people have to do is, I get numerous complaints to our office, and they have to call the police. They have to call the police. And unless they're willing to do that, which most people aren't, then.
Thank you.
Any other announcements? Councilman Abdullah?
Yeah, I just had a question for Chief Gavin. I was speaking with the mayor about this a few days back. Any update in regards to, and I'm not even sure if it's within our jurisdiction, in regards to the Dairy Queen on Ford Road, I mean, it almost happened to me this time, and it's happened many times to me and others. The amount of cars are just stopped there waiting to get ice cream, which, you know, I mean, I get is great and what have you, but I'm really, really concerned about the danger over there with people driving 40, 50, 60 miles per hour on Ford Road, and suddenly you got a, you know, eight, nine cars parked on, practically parked on Ford Road. Is there anything that we can do on our end as a city? If not, maybe you can contact the county or what have you.
You know, that, Mr. Councilman, that's been a continuous problem, and, you know, we're asking our officers to do traffic enforcement there. You hate to write people a ticket before they go get their ice cream, but like you said, it's becoming a hazard, and we've had a few accidents there. So we're trying to increase the enforcement, and we're working on dealing with some of the signs there. That is, the state roads, we have to go through the state of Michigan to get signs put up there.
So for clarification purposes, then, if somebody's getting ice cream, and they're basically stopped on Ford Road, waiting in line, you know, to get into the drive-through, they technically can be ticketed?
Sure, that's interfering with traffic.
Impeding traffic.
Impeding traffic, so yeah. Any of the?
So the burden's not on the business, and in this particular case?
Not really.
Okay.
Not really, it's something that maybe our planning, you know, they're already.
We've got to figure out some solution, because it's, it's pretty dangerous over there, you know?
Yeah, we'd behoove the business owner to do something.
Come up with something, yeah.
Yeah, because otherwise, people aren't going to stop. They start stopping, getting a ticket, they're going to go stop somewhere else.
Right, thank you.
Any other announcements? Any other announcements, Mr. Clerk?
We are three weeks away from election. We still don't have ballots for precincts one through 12. First of all, I want to thank all the citizens that have been calling, concerned about their ballots. Everybody has been very understandable with the answers we give them, or the non-answers that we give you. The information that we are getting is limited. Every email that I get from either Wayne County or the state probably begs more questions about the process or the procedure. All I can tell you is I, the last word I was given is, "We hope that you will have the ballots by Friday." This is probably an unprecedented situation, so thank you, first of all, for understanding. I've talked to several people who have a situation where I'm on the verge of going out of town. We are making every effort to accommodate you. I had a couple come in today, they're going to call me first thing Monday to see if we got the ballots. I assure you, if we get the ballots Friday, Saturday, we will have staff to stuff them. Approximately, we have 1,400 envelopes right now waiting to be stuffed with ballots. I'm trying to get in touch with the post office for the bulk mailing to ensure that we can get that, and that is a significant savings when we bulk mail. So with that being said, if you have any questions about your ballot, please call us, 791-3432. You can ask, talk directly to me, and we will do whatever we can to, to make sure that you get your ballot in a timely fashion. I am going to a meeting tomorrow with Wayne County and the state, hopefully, unfortunately, it's not before this meeting, but hopefully, they will have more information, and more information will be forthcoming. If there is anything really important, I will post it on our website. Speaking of the website, we did the video regarding voting. It is on the channel, it is showing on YouTube, there's been about 7500, 75 views, 7,500, I wish. I hope it's not all my friends and family, because they shared it all over. So please, if you looked at it, one person commented on it and told me they kind of liked it, so we just want to know if we're being helpful, so please give me a call and say, "We liked it, but we didn't, didn't appreciate seeing your face for 15 minutes," or whatever you want to say about it. So feedback is appreciated. We want to do it for November, and we really want to be helpful, so that feedback would be appreciated.
I watched it, and I did like it.
Well, thank you, Councilman. Well, that's the second piece of feedback I got.
Me and your mom, right?
I so greatly appreciate that.
I liked the program, but I didn't like the presenter.
Yeah, fair enough, we'll fix that on the next video. What else did I want to say? Oh, poll workers, poll workers, folks. I don't know what we're going to do, I am begging. We need people with computer experience. Other communities are hiring employment agencies, paying enormous amounts of money to get people to work. I shouldn't say that, because then we'll lose some, but. At an election commission meeting today, we have voted for a one-time raise on the presidential election of $20. If money is an enticement, we are going from 130 to 150. If you take the computer training, that's an additional 20, and you must go to a mandatory meeting Wednesday before the election, that's 10, so the package is 180. Friends, family, anybody, all you out there, if everybody gives me two people, that'll help, so please, we really want to get six people to polls, we want to do the very best we can for our electorate to, to get them moving in a reasonable manner, and the way we can do that is having enough people. So we're going to be advertising on April, August 2nd at the polls, there'll be applications at the polls. If you go to vote, think about that. And once again, I appreciate everybody's understanding at this most difficult time about the election, and don't forget to go vote, August 2nd. Thank you so very much.
Any other announcements? Mike, Director Cafferty?
Hello, council chair and mayor, just want to talk about a couple of upcoming events at the library. First off, Tuesday, July 19th, from 7:00 to 8:30 PM at Carolyn Candy Library, we will be having a program on the Jaworski Gang. Join Paul Kavyev as he discusses the notorious safe-cracking and bank robbing gang that operated out of Hamtramck in the late 20s. Next is our upcoming summer social at Carolyn Candy Library, Saturday, July 23rd, from 1:00, 2:00, 3:00 PM. Join us for a demonstration from the Redford Township Unicycle Club, and hear live music with guitarist John Smith while ice cream is served. Should be a blast, so come on out. Also wanted to note that due to the success of our mobile internet hotspot program, we've ordered five additional units. We can't keep them in, people always want them, so we've ordered five additional units, so that'll be 10. They should be ready in the next couple of weeks, so be on the lookout. Finally, I wanted to announce that the state of Michigan has recently approved making Nolan Cemetery a official historic site. This process still has many months to complete, there's a lot of wording for the plaque, that takes another one to three months, and there's still a lot of work we're still doing on it. But yeah, this is a vital step in making it an official state landmark. So that's all for now, thank you for your time, and see you at the library.
Great job, Mike, thank you. Chief Brogan?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Some of you may have seen this on Facebook already, but the Dearborn Heights firefighters will once again be taking on Channel 7 in a charity softball game. The game is July 16th at 4 o'clock over at Municipal Field, that's the one you enter off, off Canfield and Ford Road there, park by the Canfield Ice Arena. This is the second year that we've done it. All the proceeds will go to the Dearborn Heights Professional Firefighters Union Charity Fund, and we use that fund for various things, such as the Great Lakes Burn Camp. Last year, we supported Operation Warmth, which we're going to do again this year, where we get coats for needy kids for the winter time. Some of the people that we expect to see from Channel 7 are Anne Marie LaFlame, Stephen Clark, Ronnie Dahl, Jen Bizrum, and Nima Shafe, among others. Last year, the firefighters did win, so I know that they're looking for revenge this year at Channel 7, so. Come out and see some local news personalities and cheer on your firefighters, and we'll have some concessions there, too, have a hot dog, and we hope to see you all there.
Chief Brogan, the date again was?
It is July 16th at 4 o'clock at Municipal. While I'm up here, just, and I'll, there'll be more of this to come, but August 27th is our Chili Cook Off, that's our other big fundraiser. It's a little bit later this year, we do it based on when the Great Lakes Burn Camp is, but August 27th, so try to keep that date free, too. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, along those same lines with the Chili Cook Off, we all got a letter in our box, it's been the council's history that we all each throw in $50 and sponsor, I think we sponsor one of the bands or something.
Yeah, you usually pay for, pay for the band, Ben and Jess, it's always much appreciated.
And we go through you, we give you the money, and then you.
We'll be doing it again this year.
Yeah.
Thank you very much.
Oh, he's got that blue paper in his hand.
Members of the council and members of the public, on June 30th, the tax bills were mailed out, they come in this blue envelope, and the due date for the summer taxes is August 15th. There's five convenient ways for you to pay your taxes. You can mail it in the return envelope that's mailed with your tax bill. You can play in person here at City Hall. City Hall is open Monday through Thursday from 8 until 5. Remember, we are closed on Fridays. After our payments, by check only, please do not put cash, we have a night deposit box to the right of the front doors of City Hall. You can drop your payment by check into there. Please include the bottom portion of the tax bill, there's a coupon at the bottom. You can play at the Dearborn Heights branches of Dearborn Federal Savings Bank, there's one on Warren Avenue near Inkster, and there's one on Telegraph Road near Dartmouth. And then you could also pay online at our website, the treasurer's website on the city's website, using a credit card or e-check, and there is a convenience fee to pay in this manner, so if you want to avoid the convenience fee, please pay in one of the other methods with a check or cash here at City Hall. The only other quick announcement that I would want to say is that there is what I call is an application for summer tax deferment, and if you have a principal residence and your household income does not exceed $40,000, you can get an extension of the due date of your summer taxes to February 14th of 2017. There's another qualified, to qualify, you have to have the household income under $40,000, be over 62, be either an eligible serviceman or eligible veteran, blind or totally disabled. So there, so you'd come in, or you can call our office at 313-791-3410, and we could mail one of these deferment applications out to you. And then you need to fill it out, sign it, check the appropriate boxes, and mail it back to us. So thank you very much, and we'll see you.
Thank you, Treasurer Riley.
Mr. Chair.
Mayor.
On a lighter note, we've been informed, there's a phenomenon going around, do I pronounce this right? Poki?
Pokemon.
Pokemon. Some of our buildings have this character, so I'm told that a lot of people that had cards and different things that are now about 20 to 25, or 20 to 30 years of age, have now got the app, and they follow it around. And it's not actually on the building, but it figures where you are, and it directs you to particular places, and I guess if you hit on it, you get points, and you get that character, and you capture them. So Ken Greivel was indicating to us that at some of our buildings, we're having large amounts. Greivel was indicating to us that at some of our buildings, we're having large amounts of young people that are gathering. And so it may not be that we have unusual activity or detrimental, but they're just capturing these little characters. So I don't, I don't know how many of you, but it's been discussed a lot this week in, in the journalistic and the TV. But this is a real phenomenon, and a lot of young people are spending their time capturing these characters.
Mr. Chairman, if I may just add, there are three Poki spots around, stops around City Hall. So if you need to stock up on the Poki balls, come to City Hall. Thanks.
Any other announcements?
Both would you.
Members of the public, any comments?
Comments?
Come up to the microphone. State Street, you live on, and your, your name, if you would.
Director of Council, Columbia Street. The upcoming meeting with Dearborn, will that be televised?
I would recommend that we do televise it. If you can let the staff know. So that's next Tuesday, 7 o'clock here.
Thank you.
Yeah, Tuesday, June 19th, 7 o'clock here at City Council.
July.
July. Any other comments from anybody in the public?
Both would you.
Support, all those in favor? Good evening, everyone.
There's one thing real quickly.